Good morning. I call to order the Planning Commission meeting of October nine, twenty twenty four at nine A M. We are meeting in the at four hundred county center board chambers, as well as remotely via Zoom. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands on the nation under God, for this world, for bringing justice to all.
Madam Clerk, please proceed with roll call.
Commissioner Gupta.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Sedano Kwan.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez is absent. Chair Ketchum.
Here.
Thank you, Chair. You have a quorum, and staff is represented by Fox and Gonzales. Thank you.
We will now open public comment for items not on the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will first call upon members in chambers, followed by speakers on Zoom. For in-person comments, the speaker slips are located in the empty room. On Zoom, please use the raised hand feature or star nine if you are calling by phone. And at this time, Madam Chair, we have no comments.
Thank you. We will now close public comment for item not on the regular agenda. Moving on to the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
That was a motion by Commissioner Gupta, second by Commissioner Sedano Kwan. Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Sedano Kwan.
Aye.
Chair Ketchum.
Aye.
Thank you, Chair. Motion carried.
Thank you. We will now move on to the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, please introduce item two.
Owner, Moon Rock Twenty Twenty Three L L C. Advocate Rachel Calteza. File number P L N twenty twenty four zero 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 nine four. Location, seven thousand Stage Road San Gregorio. A P N zero eight one two four zero zero five zero, and your project planner is Tiffany G.
Okay, so this, uh, contest is, um, oh, okay. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, good morning, Commissioners. Uh, this is a, um, consideration of an agricultural preserve and California Land Conservation Act contract for a one hundred fifty-one acre parcel located in the unincorporated San Gregorio area. Um, so, um, it is going to be for, uh, commercial cattle grazing on fenced pasture land, and it will be the entire one hundred fifty-one acre parcel. Uh, this is the parcel, uh, here, uh, located in the, um, Blue area. Uh, it is, um, so for Williamson Act contracts, um, property owners voluntarily enter with the county. Uh, some county requirements are that they have to comply with the uniform rules. Um, and there are limitations for non-agricultural uses. Um, they're, they are ten-year rolling contracts, uh, and they automatically renew every, uh, January first, uh, for another ten years. Um, either party can request a non-renewal, so that can be from the county or from the owner. Um, after the non-renewal gets processed, the contract is still in effect for nine years. So, um, so it non-renews on the next January first, and it will continue for the rest of that ten-year contract, which would be the nine remaining years. Um, and the benefits to a Williamson Act contract are, uh, property taxes being lowered for the owner. Um, the uniform rules conformance for, uh, for the agriculture enterprise area, it is in compliance, it is, um, local importance land and grazing lands. Um, it is designated agriculture with the, um, L T P and general plan. The zoning has to be K D R M or R M Z Z, and it is P A D, so it buys minimum parcel size of forty acres, it's one hundred fifty acres, fifty-one acres, it complies. Um, there are a few, um, areas of, or one area of prime soils in the northeast corner, that's, um, about four point three acres, um, and the rest of the parcel is, uh, non-prime soil. And, uh, there is no crop income requirement for, uh, commercial grazing. And, uh, the acreage used for grazing is seventy-five percent of the parcel, we're going to be using a hundred percent of the parcels, so it complies. Um, it's consistent with the general plan as, um, it's the designated agriculture, it's consistent with L T P policies, um. There is no development on this parcel, it will fully be used for grazing. And, um, it complies with L T P policies because it encourages preservation of agricultural lands, and this will be an agricultural, uh, present, uh, an ag preserve and a contract to, um, restrict uses. Uh, it's consistent with the zoning regulations, it's a P A D, um, and agriculture isn't allowed use. Um, there are no structures or compatible uses on the parcel, it will be fully used for grazing, and there are no known zoning violations. Um, we, the Agriculture Advisory Committee, uh, uh, listened or, uh, heard this project on their September ninth, uh, meeting, and they unanimously agreed for a recommended approval to the planning. And border supervisors. It's a exempt from CEQA, which is the California Environmental Quality Act, under, uh, section fifteen three one seven, class seventeen, which is open space contracts or easements. Um, and it exempts the establishment of ag preserves and the making and renewing of open space contracts under the Williamson Act. Okay, so, uh, the recommendation and findings is that the planning commission recommends that the border supervisors find their request to establish an agricultural preserve to be consistent with the county, general plan, plan egg, agriculture district slash coastal development district, the California Land Conservation Act and the Samatail County Land Conservation Act Uniform Rules and Procedures. And, um, to also adopt a resolution to establish an I, agricultural preserve and authorizing education of the California Land Conservation Act or Williamson Act contract for A P N zero eight one two four zero zero five zero. And, um,
Thank you for your presentation. Do Commissioners have questions for staff?
No questions.
You?
Yes. Uh, I just, uh, noticed that, uh, the min- minimum parcel size requirement that I read in the, uh, report said hundred acres, but here it says forty.
Yeah.
Like the table said forty, but, uh, most of the places said hundred acre, I'm just, uh, clarifying that in my, for myself.
Um, for grazing land, uh, it is a forty acre minimum, um, I'm not sure exactly where it says hundred, but, um, there are different requirements for different, um, uh, uses of it's, uh, crop production or, um, vineyards or something, and, uh, for, uh, grazing, but for, for grazing, uh, it is, it is forty acres, forty. So it does comply.
Right, it is bigger than hundred anyway.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Sorry if there is, um,
No, yeah, no, it's, it's for my own clarification, yeah, so. Okay, so my real questions are, um, how, how is, uh, the com- compliance monitored over, uh, ten years? Like whether they are complying, uh, with, um, because, because they are being given a benefit, right? They are not, their property tax is being reduced.
Yes.
So how is, how is it sort of police, whether they are complying with not building any structures or not doing what, or continuing with keeping the land open, uh, as an open space?
So, um, with our county, a lot of, um, if there's any code violations, then, um, we are something driven, so we'd have to get a complaint, but for the Williamson Act, we also send out surveys every year, um, to, uh, the Williamson, Williamson Act, um, council office, to make sure that they're, I mean, i- it's information that's volunteered from them, so they would tell us if they are compliant, we, we don't go out to drive it, uh, to check. But, um, I believe that they're, for, you said also for, um, structures, so some structures are compatible uses, so if it's, uh, something like a barn or, um, something that has to do with the commercial grazing, or even a house, or like the owners to live, or the people that lease the land to live, um, we do a, a review to make sure that they're, uh, in compliance with, uh, the compatible uses.
Perhaps I can add some clarification as well. It's really two components. One is ongoing commercial agricultural production, and that is something that is verified through the survey process, where we send out an annual survey to the Williamson Act, um, contract holders, and they report, um, whether or not they're continuing to produce agricultural commodities and enter them into, you know, the stream of commerce. So that part is handled on the survey side. On the side having to do with, um, uh, ensuring that structures that are incompatible with agricultural activities aren't being built, we have our ordinary process for code compliance. Either people are building things by applying for permits, in which case the planner will evaluate the application in comparison to the Williamson Act status of the parcel, and, um, you know, recommend denial if, if allowing the structure would, would violate the, the Williamson Act rules. Uh, or if we find out that a person has built a structure without the benefit of permits, then we go through our ordinary code compliance process to verify whether that's true.
Thank you for explaining that. And, uh, if a property is, uh, sold during that period, during those ten years, uh, is the Williamson Act, uh, applicable to the new owner?
Yes, the contract is among the types of, um, instruments that run with the land, and so, uh, you can't have a transaction that makes it go away, it gets transferred to the new owner.
And, um, I was looking at this table where it says that, uh, what is the impact when, uh, due to the loss of revenue, uh, when, when the, uh, because property, less property tax comes in, right? Uh, to the, to the county, uh, and the, the general county tax is, uh, there's a loss of general county tax to the libraries, to the, uh, to the education tax, et cetera, et cetera, there's a big table here. So are they compensated in any other ways to those bodies?
Good morning, Commissioners. My apologies for being late. Um, i- it's true that entering into a Williamson Act reduces the tax revenue that goes to certain special districts. Um, that's just kind of the cost of getting assurance that the property will remain in agricultural production. But at a larger scale, um, you know, the, there's lots of properties that come in and out of contract, and the number of properties coming out of contract over the past few years has greatly outnumbered the number of new properties entering into contract. So while entering into this contract will result in the loss of revenue, um, from this property, overall cumulatively, um, on balance, this is, uh, the overall revenue is, um, I wouldn't say it remains the same, it's likely increasing because the number of properties that are coming off the Williamson Act.
But there's no fixed number. Like, just, like this, uh, we don't cut it off at any point that said that we cannot give any more Williamson Act permits, um, because we have already issued so many.
Not currently, I mean, participating in the Williamson Act program is not a mandatory requirement for the county. And in fact, um, following the Department of Conservation's audit of our Williamson Act program, probably more than a decade ago, uh, you know, that was a difficult question that the county grappled with is, you know, is it in our interest to participate? And the conclusion was that, yes, it is, because it is the one tool available to ensure that ag land remains in ag production, so, um, and also, as I noted earlier, the balance between taking people off contract, well, people come on, um, I think, was relative assurance to the county that continued participation wouldn't result in a dramatic decrease in revenue for special districts.
So we don't, every time such a, uh, request comes in, we are not looking at the overall, um,
The financial impact.
Financial impact, right, to the county.
Well, I mean, that's why we provide the table, because we want everyone to be informed of the consequences, um, and it certainly would be possible for us to provide a broader view of how many contracts have been, um, non-renewed versus how many new contracts have entered into. I don't have those numbers handy, but I can tell you that the number of contracts non-renewed greatly outnumber the, um, number of new contracts being entered into.
And, and this is not, Williamson Act is not just in our county.
No, it's a, it's a state law, um, yeah, that many, many, uh, counties are participate in because of the interest in retaining agricultural use.
Thank you, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
No more questions, thank you.
Does the applicant wish to speak? You have fifteen minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners, staff, and the public. I'm Carrie Burke, here on behalf of, uh, Moon Rock L L C, the Gunther and Anna Hamm family. And, uh, appreciate Tiffany's presentation, and also in your packet you might notice under attachment C was that this is just one parcel adjacent to their primary ranch, which is eleven hundred and, um, fifty additional acres that is also in grazing and is under a current Williamson Act contract. And just to give you some more historical background on this parcel, it was always vacant, it was at one point purchased by Minnesota Open Space Trust, and then it was added to the Arata family ranch, and it is under also a conservation easement. And that's why it is, um, there's no development ever going to be planned, there is not allowed. And, uh, but also, as, uh, for the taxing issue, was it was always low taxes, and just because of the sales price, when the Hamm family purchases, this parcel took the hit of the larger taxes, but it really was just a, you know, it always has been lower, so it, you know, really hasn't, um, gonna affect the tax base that much, because it was just a temporary raise in taxes, but given that there's no development rights, that it is in grazing, that they spent a lot of money on fencing and improving the agricultural condition with brush removal, and, and, um, also providing new water facilities for the ranch, that, that it's appropriate that the entire, you know, thirteen hundred acres will be covered under now two contracts, just the way we're set up, because the original Arata contract, and now this new contract. But, um, I, I think it makes sense, it really does put the whole thing under the umbrella of the Williamson Act. They are under the obligation to obviously make their annual reporting. Um, it is under a commercial lease with an old leasing family, the Pacheco family on the coast side. And, um, just hope that the, if you have any more questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but, um, hopefully you approve this, and I, I know it's on a tight schedule to, to go to the board as a contract and, and on to the state, so we, we also, we all appreciate that you came in today just for this one item, but the staff is under a tight deadline on it, but thank you very much, and, um, any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions? No, thank you very much. We will now open public comment for item two. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did not receive any slips in chambers. And given it just a minute, but there are no virtual hands on Zoom either, so no comment for item two.
Thank you. We will now close public comment for item two. Uh, you've been thinking ad.
Well, I understand there was a question about the minimum size for preserve versus contract, and I think the, um, answer to that is that because we have adjacent properties that are also under contract, that we do, in fact, the preserve as a total will meet that minimum, so just in case there was any the outstanding questions on that, otherwise I'm happy to answer any questions the Commissioners may have.
Any question, any question for the questions, comments?
No, I.
Uh, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion, um, that the planning, that we recommend that the border supervisors, uh, find a request to establish an agricultural preserve to be consistent with the county's general plan, and agricultural district, coastal development district, and California Land Conservation Act, and Samatail County Land Conservation Act Uniform Rules and Procedures. And secondly is to adopt the resolution establishing a agricultural, agricultural preserve and authorizing execution of a California Land Conservation Williamson Act contract for A P N zero eight one dash two four zero dash zero five zero.
I will second that.
Thank you. That was a motion by Commissioner Sedano Kwan, and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Gupta?
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sedano Kwan?
Aye.
Chair Ketchum?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair. Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now close item two and move on to items three to five from the Director.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Um, so as far as the next meeting is concerned, uh, we don't have a study session, although we do have an informational item. That item is the, um, results of the North Fair Oaks Community Plan Ten Year Review. So this has been a, you know, unique project reflecting upon our accomplishments, um, in implementing the plan and also, um, updating the priorities of the community. And it's, uh, been a valuable effort to undertake, and I, we look forward to presenting the, uh, results of that analysis. Um, the other item that we have on the agenda is, um, a, an appeal of, uh, Coastside Design Review Committee approval of a, uh, new two-story residence that's located in Montero. Um, I think the Commissioners might recall some concerns about whether or not story poles are required as part of the design review process, and I think this is one of the issues that were, is raised by this, so should be an interesting discussion. Um, so those are the two items for the next meeting, uh, moving on to the, uh, Director's Report. Uh, I wanted to let you know that at yesterday's Board of Supervisors meeting, uh, the Board approved the code reorganization that this commission endorsed. Uh, they also heard an appeal of the Woodland School Conditional Use Permit, and they upheld the decision of the Planning Commission to approve that conditional use permit. Uh, there was one condition added to make it clear what the consequences of non-compliance with the conditions would be. Um, in addition, there was an addendum to the staff report to address a, an issue that came up between the Planning Commission's approval and the board hearing. Uh, there was some confusion amongst the neighborhood about the conditions that relate to minor and major events versus the condition that relates to normal after-school hours. And so the purpose of the addendum was to be clear about distinguishing between those two, because, um, along the lines of adding the condition regarding the consequences of non-compliance, you know, the department wants to take its responsibility of ensuring compliance with these conditions seriously, and if there is a violation of those conditions, we intend to take action. So it was really important that we all be on the same page about how those conditions would be interpreted and applied. And so the addendum, I think, was useful in that regard. Um, the commission also, um, I'm sorry, the, the Board also, um, endorsed a Williamson Act contract similar to the one that we heard today. Um, as far as upcoming board meetings at the, um, next Board of Supervisors meeting, I believe it's October twenty-second, they will be considering the, um, tree ordinance update. And then, uh, we have a number of important items coming up in November, which I can update you on at our next Planning Commission meeting. Um, the final thing I'll note is that we are, um, having a workshop regarding Plan Princeton and the, um, shoreline management issues, climate change, coastal erosion issues that we've been grappling with. Um, that workshop will be on Friday, November first, and it will occur in, um, Supervisor Mueller's Coastside Office, um, and I'm happy to provide more detail about that if you have questions. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Steve, just, um, I don't, I don't recall the last update with the housing element, is there anything there?
Yeah, so since we received the response from H C D after our second submittal, um, we've been working collaboratively with H C D staff to work through all their comments and ensure that our approach to addressing them is going to be acceptable, because we don't want to go through another round and be unsuccessful in gaining their approval. So we've had three meetings to date with them so far, they've all gone very well, they've been helpful in helping us understand what they're expecting in terms of how we respond to their comments. We have, uh, another meeting scheduled with them to try, to try and come to resolution about the sites assessment and how we are demonstrating compliance with our regional allocation. And our objective is to bring it back to the Board of Supervisors by December thirteenth. We don't anticipate that any of the, um, additional information that we'll be providing to H C D is going to be a substantive change to what this commission previously endorsed. So we don't anticipate it, we'll need to come back to the Planning Commission, because we're essentially supplementing information, not changing our approach. And so, um, it's really in the county's overall interest to complete this process as soon as possible. During the period, we remain uncertified, we're ineligible to obtain state grants, which we would like to obtain, so we're trying to get to a final resolution as soon as possible, and hopefully that will happen before the end of the calendar year. Thank you.
The, um, the workshop on the Princeton Shoreline, that's November first, you say?
It's correct.
The, um, what's it say? Oh. Related to the housing, so these Senate bills about housing, and I can't keep the number straight, but I, I noticed on Exella that there's been an application for Senate bill, I don't know which one, uh, Seal Cove, it's for ten houses, according to S B, I'm sorry, I don't remember, I think it was three digits. Uh, and, uh, the notes on Exella said. According to SB, I'm sorry, I don't remember. I think it was three digits. Uh, and on the notes on Exella said, work with, I don't know, Will Gibson. The county has never done one of these and there'll be a learning process. And then every, all the other planners can learn from that. Um, I just, uh, have you heard anything about this? I, uh.
Well, I appreciate you bringing it to my attention because it is not on my radar and it sounds like something that uh, should be. So I'll, I'll certainly look into it and be prepared to um, update the commission on what's happening at the next.
Yeah, I think it was somebody in the real estate business that said, oh, look at this. What's going on here? And I said, I don't know. And, oh, oh, and um, and so I looked up the parcels on, on Exella. There are two parcels, one, a strip. This is along Los Banos.
Okay.
This is the wider street. And the zoning for the larger parcel that I guess is under same ownership or whatever is agriculture. And I assume that that's not going to apply there. It's zone agriculture. They can't force housing there, right?
I, I would make the same assumption, but I don't know for sure. So let me look into it and report back.
Yeah, there's definitely, once anybody finds out about this, they want to know, oh, what's going on? So I just, any information would be helpful. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Were you going to say something?
Yes.
I couldn't tell if you were picking that. Okay.
Yeah, my, my, my was off.
We're not adjourned.
Um, yeah, I had looked at this. If it is not appropriate for here, please let me know. Uh, I had looked at this, something about the farm worker housing, some issues happening. Is that something appropriate for our commission here at all?
Well, um, I, I think it is generally an appropriate topic in that um, you know, this has been a significant effort by the department following the um, tragic shootings in Half Moon Bay over a year ago to do an in-depth investigation into the health and safety of the um, employee housing provided in our rural areas. And um, that effort is coming to a conclusion. Um, it has been focused, as I mentioned, on the health and safety of the employee housing units. And through those investigations, we have identified a number of properties that are going to require some significant follow-up work. And so I think, you know, that's some of the news that you might have run across is that, you know, some of the properties that we've investigated, we have identified significant violations that really need to be addressed, um, not just through simple fixes to a unit here and there. Because um, many of the farms, I want to say six, approximately sixty percent of the farms and we um, inspected oh, well over a hundred farms. They were found to be in um, adequately safe conditions. Um, many others though, you know, they were missing smoke alarms, carbon monoxide alarms. They needed to make changes to ensure the ability to escape in the event of a fire. And um, in most of those instances, the property owners and the operators of those farms have been cooperative in making the corrections needed to ensure the safety of their workers. Um, however, you know, there are other properties where we identified, well, this is not really a farm worker housing issue. This is a code compliance issue where development has occurred without proper permits. And it, this, the, you know, the violations are substantial enough to warrant, you know, some follow-up action. We didn't come into this with the intent to, you know, um, penalize owners and operators who had farm worker housing um, unnecessarily. But um, in some instances, the extent of the violations were so significant that we determined it would not be appropriate for us not to take action.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, it was on my, my.
Beth, it's SB three thirty.
Yes, I got that. I figured that out. Thank you. The problem is I just don't know what that provides. So I'm gonna have to do a little bit of research on that.
Thank you.
Sure.
So we are now adjourned. Thank you.